Are you guys ready to begin? No, I'm asking. Tony, we, uh, we good? All right.
Okay, everybody, welcome to the City of Utica Common Council November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, pre-caucus meeting. We're gonna get started with ordinance number four. Recent, chapter two dash five, article three, foul. We're also going to be discussing, because there's only a few pieces of legislation, we're gonna be having a committee meeting plus the pre-conference meeting. Actually, before we get started with that, I'm going to give the floor over to Mike Mahoney. He's going to give us an update on the paving of the roads and everything that's going on with that.
Yep, it's been, as everybody knows, it's been a tough year for paving. We're behind. It's November, almost Thanksgiving, when the plants close. Uh, we did do Hurkema Road today, um, and one other street in North Utica. We still have five streets left to do. Um, a lot of things have gone on with this year's program. The initial bid was about three and a half million dollars. We added another three million dollars to it. Between material shortages and truck driver shortages, it's put us way behind. Uh, manpower, all those good things that everybody's been hearing about out in the media. Um, so anyway, we're, we're gonna wrap it up on Saturday. We've got two crews. Weather, because paving is weather dependent. Um, so we have five streets left to top. Um, there's one in North Utica, that's Cosby. In South Utica, there's French Road, Talcott, Hartford, and Sunnyside. So they'll all get done on Saturday as long as we have a good day. So let's, I'll pray for good weather.
... and Grinch, Sunnyside, and Hartford?
Yep.
And, and you think the weather report is that Saturday is gonna be...
Saturday is supposed to be a decent day. So, you know, it's kinda, it's dragged on, and, um, I do apologize. It's not, certainly not intended. Um, but it's, it's the way the program has worked out this year. Um, it's obviously, this is late to be paving, in my mind. We'd like it to be done by the end of September. Um, that's the general rule that we've come up with, but, um, it did not work. So, anyway, we'll get it done.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just, we're gonna, we are gonna do a, we are gonna do a few things for you all, just to kinda give you, you know, a little bit about how it works, some bullet points on how it works. Um, just, just to kind of let you know all the points on it. Um, they are gonna make some changes for next year's bid spec. Um, one of the things that we haven't done, that we have learned other communities do, is they put a timeline on the amount of time the road can be opened, from the time it's milled to the time it's topped, which is five or six weeks. It does come at an expense, because that means that you're paying for mobilization. You have to bring those, the top crew, you know, in that many more times into the city. So, we are gonna put it out there, try to get this so it doesn't happen again. Um, so, but anyway, we'll get a memo out to everyone and, um, kinda give you an idea of where we're at.
Thank you. Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor?
Yeah. Um, Mike, I just wanted to thank you, uh, you and administration for having Celeste and myself up there yesterday. And going forward, we'll be getting together. I appreciate that. Um, I just, I understand everything you had, everything that went on. I'd just like in the future to keep us more abreast of it, and we talked about that yesterday, and we are. So that, my last question to you is, you're done after those streets, any of the patching, the streets...
We did do, uh, well, the repairs contract was four hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. We've done almost four, according to Austin's, um, calculations at last. We're still, you know, there's still a lot of patch work that could be done out there, a lot of things that we wanted to get done that is probably not gonna get done this year.
Right, so basically, you're done after...
And there's also, there's more roads that were added to this year's program that didn't get done.
Right.
And those will be done first thing in the spring.
Right.
So that, as I go into the next bid, that stays in this bid. We're carrying it forward to next year.
So just correct me, our original plan was five million. We did seven point two million, but we didn't, we're...
We didn't do it. We didn't do all of it.
We have about a million in the bank, right?
We still have some of the streets due. We, we're gonna finish up this season at about six point five.
Okay, so, and that money's banked, that money's banked?
That money is earmarked, and it's ready to go for first thing in the spring.
Okay, so next year, we would borrow five and top of that money we already have?
If that's what you wanna do.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Friend, you have the floor?
Thank you. Um, I love the idea of like that how-to, bullet points, because that, I think, would help us to explain things to constituents, and that keeps them happier, at least for me in South Utica. That's what works well. Would it make any difference if we bought granite in advance? Is that feasible to think like...
Part of the problem was the granite this year.
Right.
And actually, they're asking us for our limits on granite now for next year.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we're not gonna get it.
Right.
So we're working, we're working on that now.
Does it, does it make sense, I mean, I'm, you, you'll tell me how this works, but does it make sense for us to buy the granite and take possession of it and stick it somewhere? You know, stick it over, make a pile of it?
Well, I mean, you're handling that a lot, and it's not an easy thing to handle.
Right, so that's more expensive. The labor is more expensive.
Yeah, so you're gonna be paying for that as well.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Can you, um, and you don't have to do this off the top of your head, but could you tell us those streets that didn't get done this year and will be on the list for the spring?
Yeah, I have a list. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Right, no, I don't expect you to have it off the top of your head, but if you could email it to me, that would be really helpful.
Sure, I can send it to everybody.
Yeah, that'd be super helpful. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mike. Moving forward with our meeting, ordinance number four. Councilmember Friend sponsored this. Recent, chapter two dash five, article three, foul. Open for discussion.
So can I, can I start us off? So just to remind, I mean, I know that we went over this last week, uh, or two weeks ago. So when we passed the zoning ordinance, we included and voted upon, um, within our supplemental regulations, some stuff about chickens and bees and rabbits, I think. It, it turned out that there was old legislation outside of the zoning ordinance, and so the new zoning ordinance doesn't automatically replace it. So as it stands right now, we have contradictory laws on the books. Um, I think that that's problematic. I think it's confusing to people who look this up on Ecode through sixty. It's been confusing for codes officers, and I still think that we ought to simply strip the old laws out while we work through the question of ordinance two.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Councilperson Mealy, you have the floor?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, after doing research on amending our zoning, probably everybody knows the process procedures we've been through this few years. But we wish we could, we can do it your way. It would be easy. But now, because there is an error in our zoning code, I'm assuming that the majority of this council is not looking for foul and bee legislation, unless we are, we want that in our city. But at this time, I'm, I believe that the majority of the council is against that. And with that said, um, I'm asking my colleagues if they would like our corporate council to move forward with legislation to the planning department to start the process to change the zoning code. The only way we can change the zoning code by law now for a process is to say it has to go to the planning department first. So if my, any of my colleagues object, if the majority wants to move forward, Stephanie may, if there's any questions, Stephanie could probably assist you in the process and go from there. Thank you.
Councilperson DeBrango, you have the floor?
Yeah, my question, uh, for Corporation Council as well as the Codes Commissioner. Um, is the city, what's their feelings on this whole situation? Um, was it done in error? Um, are they, are they satisfied with the old law versus this, this new amendment or this new zoning law? I just need a little feedback on the city, as well as how much havoc is this gonna cause the Codes Department as well, so.
So I can't speak on behalf of everybody, but I don't, I don't believe we have a position. Um, I don't believe, you know, that's up to you. That's a policy determination. But as far as the statute goes, um, the reason that I think the inconsistency happened was the regulations regarding bees and chicken were not initially in the zoning. So that's how I think it got missed when they repealed everything and got rid of it from the zoning, is because it wasn't actually in that section prior to. So, that's the reason, I think, for the inconsistency, the inconsistency. Um, and ordinarily, you know, the update to the zoning code was extensive. Um, and I think that's the reason it got left out, and that's why we didn't see it in the, uh, that section get removed. But as far as, you know, the policy determination is whether or not you want bees and chicken, that's, that's a policy determination, what you guys...
I wanna know if the, I wanna know if the administration is for the foul and the bees. I wanna know that.
I'd have to...
I may not make a decision tonight, because I wanna know if they're for it or against it, because that may, that may be based on my decision, which way I'm going to, to vote on this matter. I like to, I like to hear from the votes.
So, so we're, I mean, on this, as Codes Commissioner, I'd be more of an operational person than, that would be a mayor. You know, so that's, that's a conversation you have to have with him, um, when planning the city. I can tell you that we had a lot of people, a lot of compliance with the old law, ticketed a lot of people. Um, it was relatively easy to enforce. You could tell somebody has chickens. Sometimes it's hard to tell where they come from. There was a lot of chickens this spring. There's chickens all over the place, right? Um, and then when we were made aware of the conflict with the law, um, you know, we had to do a lot of educating at first, but we got less calls. I don't know if that's because there's less birds, or because people know it's legal now, or because it's a different season. But, um, the new law is harder to enforce as written now. And I've, I've, I've talked about this, because it requires us to know how many chickens are there, how big the coop is, how big the fence is. That's essentially impossible to tell from the street. I can't go on people's property and look. So differentiate between a chicken and a rooster, um, how many chickens are in the coop, how big is the coop, where's the fence? That's all stuff I can't do from the road. So if, if there is gonna be a law that regulates chickens, then we have to have some authority, whether it's a permit process, or some kind of license, or something, that allows us to go in their backyard and inspect these things, because I can't tell from the road. That's my only feedback.
Councilperson Moody, you have the floor?
Yeah, um, let, let me first say that surprisingly, I have gotten calls when I first got on the council by teachers. Uh, one teacher in particular in my district had wanted chickens and wanted me to look at this. This was something that, that when I got on the council, like thrill cast, I didn't think that I would have to deal with, uh, uh, first getting on. So surprisingly, there is a lot, and, and I know, um, particularly a lot of, uh, uh, folks from other countries, and, and a lot of African Americans who migrated to Utica from the south, particularly have an interest in, in keeping chickens and things of that nature. Um, so, but, but I do have a question to Corporation Council. Um, we've talked about procedure tonight, and, um, I wanna know what essentially is the difference between ordinance four and ordinance two? If both of which are changing the, 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 the code, right, uh, what's the procedural difference?
So you can't, so this, this ordinance, ordinance number two can't be done without first going to planning board. Planning board has to make a recommendation, um, so if that's something you wanna go forward, I wouldn't advise against that section, because it makes things more complicated, because that section, uh, amending the definitions is just gonna amend the definition. There's still gonna be a provision in the zoning code that allows chickens. And my personal opinion is you're just gonna create more havoc, um, and create more inconsistencies and problems for people who are reading it, where they see in definitions, well, it's prohibited here, but why is there a whole section talking about chickens? So I would advise against that, but like I said, that section would have to still go in front of planning board. It couldn't be, you know, discussed procedurally.
And what does not have to go in front of planning board is four, right?
Correct. Neither of those do, do not have to go in front of planning board.
So this question about procedure is really not in, on the question, this question about procedure is not about ordinance four, it's about ordinance two?
Well, if, if council's a general opinion that they do not want chickens, I would recommend keeping sections, uh, chi...
No, I'm not even on the whether we want chickens or not. Just off the pure process, what we can do tonight, we can pass forward, no question. We cannot pass two unless it goes to the planning board.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all, Ms. George. I'm cool.
Any other question? Councilperson Friend, you have the floor?
Um, okay, I wanna just make sure that everybody understands a couple of things, since not everybody read the, I, I think, maybe by now people have, but haven't read the original zoning thing about this. Um, just to make it clear, right, in terms of, you know, when, when Commissioner Phillips says he gets calls, he often gets calls because chickens are in the road, for instance, or he gets calls because, uh, roosters are crowing. Both of those things are completely expressly forbidden by the law that we all passed back in February, in which you can only have hens, not roosters, and they have to be completely contained. So the law that we passed involves a coop, which is completely enclosed both on the sides and on the top. So we're not talking about chickens roaming around backyards. That's still prohibited by the law. We're not talking about roosters. That's also prohibited by the law. Um, and we're talking no more than, I, I think, uh, no more than six. So it's one per thousand square feet of property, so for a property like mine, that means five hens. But nobody, no matter how large their property is, can have more than six birds. So we're not, a lot of what's going on in the city that people are bothered by, the kind of calls that the commissioner is describing, are still out of comply, all of those people are still out of compliance, and this law just has no bearing on it. The desire of people, I, I know that it surprises some people to learn this, that there's, and this is gonna sound kind of funny to some of you, I think. There is literally a small-scale backyard chicken movement that started ten years ago, and that actually really got, took off, um, uh, with, in the pandemic. More people during the pandemic, um, sort of got, liked this idea of having their own hens in the backyard, collecting a few eggs, et cetera. It's become very popular in cities across the United States. Um, Albany passed a law similar to ours in two thousand and nineteen. Rochester and Pittsburgh both permit backyard hens. Buffalo permits up to five hens. White Plains, New York, Troy, New York, so all of these cities here, and this is just a quick survey of New York State, all of them have amended their city codes to allow people to keep a few hens. I know it doesn't appeal to many of you. Um, it almost sort of appeals to me, but I, I'm a gardener instead, so I'm not gonna give up garden space for hens. Uh, but there are lots of people out there, and Mr. Moody has done a good job of describing this, a lots of good, responsible people who would like to have a few hens in their backyard. And there are some people who went to a lot of trouble to become compliant with our new law, and I think anything that would strip them now of their right to do this would be incredibly unfair. Um, and, and they're not the source of the problems. The problems that we have with chickens in the city are people who are not doing what our law requires. Thank you.
Judge Guermont, you have the floor?
I didn't, uh, just in charge of, I, I didn't, I didn't understand your, uh, situation, uh, regarding number two, that I wrote to put in the zoning law that the ordinances that prohibit that would be part of the, the zoning law. And that means it has to go to planning board. They have their, uh, procedures, and then it comes back to us. We have our procedures. So there's a lot of exposure in that process. That's one of the things that I thought, number one. Number two, thing I didn't mention, is that, uh, the city is a residential, uh, property that is different than the rural properties. And when you get close to allowing certain animals in the city, you change the complex of the city. Now, I don't know what these other places did, but if you own property in the city in a residential area, the question is, do those people want, uh, their property to be a journey, a mini farm? Because when you go with chickens and bees, what's the difference with pe, uh, with pigs? And other ants, uh, and, uh, you don't allow horses in the city. You could have a ten-acre piece of property in the city, uh, but you're not gonna have a horse there. And there's a reason for that, because you keep the, the rural and non-rural separated. And when people buy homes, they expect that their property values are not gonna be diminished by... diminished by anything the government did. Now, I'm not arguing the point on behalf of the common council members individually. I own a piece of property, and it's a very residential, and I don't want anything that resembles its character being changed by the legislative body that subjects me to having people next door, having farm animals. Chickens are farm animals, they're not residential. Just because of somebody else convinced somebody, people, chickens are chickens. If you have one rooster there, you will find out what it's like to have a rooster in your backyard. Now, with regard to the bees, if you are allergic to bees, and a sting will kill you, like the member of the judiciary who I was acquainted with, who had to leave the golf course because he didn't have his medication with him, and he just made it home, because if he didn't make it home, you would have died. Now, I don't want a bee hive next door to me, and I don't think a lot of people understand that a bee hive is a bee hive. Well, the bees, bees are controlled, bees are bees, bees get out and they're, they're going to be around. Now, I'm speaking two ways, two ways. One, as legal counsel, when you start allowing one animal, there is not a very good argument about other animals. And the reason residential areas don't have that is because that is not the character of the property of where you move to live. Now, we have had on the books, the two ordinances we talked about, for as long as I can remember, because it was never an issue. Just because it became an issue out in some other places, that's, but when you talk about the city of Utica, you're talking about the entire city of Utica, not a particular district or a particular area or anything like that. When you have an ordinance that says something's allowed, it's allowed everywhere. Now, I have no idea what my neighbors think, and I don't think you do either. So they might be in favor of such a thing. But when, when you open the door to one thing, once you open that door, what is the difference between having pigs, five pigs? There is no difference really, there are, there are a lot of animals that you could have, that would, you know, people would consider okay, you know? So I, I, I don't, I think that's why people go live on farms, because they want all these other animals. People who live in the city don't expect they find chickens wandering in their backyard, and their dogs killing them, and then the, having these disputes with your neighbor because of your dog, I happen to spot a chicken. Now, that's, that's why I said legally, I thought, the only thing to do is if you don't want chickens and bees, you've got to change the zoning ordinance. And you've got to make it clear to zoning ordinance, our definition of, of what that is, is clear. And that agriculture urban means urban, not farm, not rural. And I think once you change the character of urban to something else, one step leads to a lot of other steps. And people are more likely to know and find out about the zoning law than they are about the ordinances.
Thank you.
People do check zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Judge.
I, I will tell you a small example of that now. I had a client who didn't use me in a closing, and he bought a big piece of property up in Clinton, and he thought he was in the town of Kirkland because he had horses that run down. But he let the bank lawyer handle the matter. So he called me up after and he said, "I got a problem, I can't bring my horses to my property." And he found out that when he was building the fence, this neighbor came over and said, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm building a fence for my horses." He said, "You can't do that." I said, "Why?" He says, "I'm in the town of Kirkland." He said, "Yes, you're in the town of Kirkland where your house is, but where you're building the fence is in the village of Clinton, you should have checked the parameters." Well, where, the only place he could put the horses was actually in the village of Clinton. It was, looked like farming, but it was the village of Clinton. And I told him, "Well, you can try to get a sort of relief from the village of Clinton, but you're not going to get it." So I'm telling you that that's the reason for the law. And, and I, and I didn't mean to interject a personal comment, but whatever, I'm a resident of the city of Utica, I'm a taxpayer, I've given you an ordinance, do something.
Thank you.
What you do with the ordinances is your business. But the public, when you have a changed zoning law, gets very much involved in the process, as opposed to just passing an ordinance. And that's why I did it with the zoning law, and I drew that down. So I take responsibility for drawing it, because I was asked to draw it.
Thank you, Judge. Corporate counsel has something to add on that.
Is what the people in the city have to live with, we're the legislature.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Corporate counsel has something to add on that?
I just want to elaborate just what Judge had said. What he did is fine as far as how it reads, I just think it makes it more confusing for anybody who's looking at a zoning ordinance, because you have something that says one thing, and they may not pick up on the other aspect and further on in the zoning ordinance. So I just, for purposes of making it clear and concise, I would just rescind.
Codes officers, you mean?
What? Yeah, it just, it makes things very confusing, and that's the only reason why I just wouldn't advise that section in changing the definition, but also having a section that still allows bees and fowls. So I would recommend, which I think you'll want me to do, is rescind that section of the zoning, so.
Counsel president, you have the floor next.
All right. Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
That's weird.
I was waiting patiently, right? All right, so I just wanted to make a comment about the, this is not a new movement, and I'm stating this because in 2016, 2017, and 2018, we had multiple residents, not only during public comment, but also come during, I believe, public hearing when the zoning code was starting to be heard. There was a huge movement of people supplying all of us with documentation and legislation from Binghamton and all those towns for, it was two and a half, three years solid. And they came here repeatedly. So this is not something that just popped up during COVID. The other thing I wanted to mention, what's that? No, regardless, I'm just saying, you know, this isn't a new, you know? The other thing I wanted to state is, I really would like us, it definitely needs to be in one place, first off. That was the whole, that was a big reason why we redid the zoning code, was so we could put everything back in one place. So having it not all over the place is key for everyone, codes officers and citizens alike. But if we go through, I just wanted to point out, in this zoning code that we did pass, all of the complaints for roosters, unkempt chickens, the whole nine yards, every single one of those things is barred by what we passed in the new zoning regulations. So if we're going to modify anything, let's do it for reasons that are against what's actually in the zoning code. Because right now, I'm hearing tons of statements floating around the room that frankly, don't make any sense if you, if we actually assess what's on the books right now. Not, and I'm not talking about the old stuff that's in section two, I'm talking about the new stuff. So if we, if we try to do any work on this at all, one, it has to start from here. We need to present something to the planning board, they need to review it, present their letter back to us, et cetera, we've gone through that a couple times. But we need to go over what's in there, and there were a ton of people who came out for this, that's how it made it in here in the first place. It was a long-term effort from a lot of people in the community. I'm done, thanks.
Yeah, after you then, Councilman Beatrice has the floor.
All I wanted to say is that, the point that the president and Celeste made, council member friend, I'm sorry, made, was that I, the way that the, the ordinance reads now, I wasn't meaning to weigh in against it, right? All I'm saying is that if you, if you were to adopt that one as, the newest one is the final one, then I would ask that you give the body, and I would assume it'd be my body, but it could be a different one, right? That is supposed to enforce it, a mechanism to enforce it. Because the things that are illegal are difficult to see without a mechanism to get permission to go into somebody's backyard and see it. That's, that's all I was trying to say, I wasn't trying to say I'm against or for the ordinance.
Thank you.
That's easy to enforce too. They're, they're both.
Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yeah, Marcus, just to reiterate on what counselperson friend talked about, so she, she states that if she has a yard that's a thousand square feet, correct, you can have one chicken?
One hen per thousand square feet.
Okay.
My yard is 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
Up to six.
So you could have at 5,000, you could have five chickens?
Yes.
Okay, and then somebody with two acres?
Could have six.
Okay, so to me, that makes absolutely no sense whatsoever anyways, but I just wanted to bring that, okay.
I just want to point out, if you read it, there's also setbacks, like, I'm not even sure you could have five on your plot because of the setbacks, that's what I'm saying, it's really structured.
Right. And my other question to you is, Marcus, when you were stating before this was passed, and you had calls, multiple calls, chickens running around, hens, roosters, that you can't enforce because you can't go on their property. So just because they're in a crate now, is that the word we want to use, is a crate, that doesn't mean, they may have been in crates before, but they get out and they run around anyways. Is that, am I correct in assuming that?
Well, yeah, I mean, they.
Right?
A bird can get out.
And you can't judge, according to what you just said, as a codes officer, you can't go on anybody's property, right?
Not uninvited.
Not uninvited. So if they have a crate, if they have a crate or cage in the back, you don't know if they got three, three chickens, 10, or if they got a rooster there, right?
That's the point I'm trying to get across.
Okay. So no, regardless about the legislation, there's really no way of enforcing it, okay? And let me, let me bring one other point up that I was just thinking about. I know everybody here, we're always talking about referendums, okay? Well, in my view, why wouldn't we honor what we had before and wait till next year, put on a referendum, and let's see what the people want, okay? Let's see if the people vote for chickens in their backyards, okay? So, I mean, I think that's what makes the most sense to me, but, that's all I have.
Okay.
Counselperson friend, you have the floor.
I'd like to extend the floor to Mr. Moody, who's going to give it right back to me.
Yes, very quickly, I think the question of chickens or not should be tabled into another meeting. This legislation about ordinance number four is to clean up conflicting laws on the book. Let's clean up the laws and then bring up the question of whether we want chickens or not at a separate meeting. That's it.
I have the floor.
Actually, I know you have the floor, but she wanted to make a comment, corporate counsel.
So the only thing I want to say, and like I said, I don't have a preference with what you do, but my only recommendation is if you are looking to rescind that section of the zoning ordinance, if that's what you want to do, I'd recommend keeping those two chapters so we're not adding and subtracting and reamending the zoning ordinance, because that's going to be a whole other process. So that's the only thing I'll caution you on, like I said, I don't have a preference with what you decide, but if you're looking to rescind the zoning ordinance which allows them, we're going to need to keep those two sections in the zoning, or not in the zoning.
In compliance, yes.
Yes.
Counselperson friend.
There's no reason, but given that we're not going to be able to do this tonight, we're looking at a situation where we continue to have conflicting laws on the books, I think we should be embarrassed by that. We can always bring them back if we need to in the future, there's no reason to continue to live with this embarrassing situation where these nine intelligent people can't take the time to read all the legislation ahead of time and not end up in this situation. Let's fix this tonight, rescind four, do, pass four and five, rescind these things, and then as somebody just said, and now I don't remember who, we need to have a committee meeting and work this out in the future. But in the short term, can we please not have a set of laws on the books which makes us look incompetent? Can we please have, not have a set of laws on the books which shows our incompetence? Which is a little different from what I first said. So, but in keeping with what President Kalimi said, I'd like to now take the opportunity to read the ordinance so that we all understand what we voted on nine months ago. B, rabbits, ducks, and hens, this is Article 11 supplemental regulations. B, rabbits, ducks, and hens, in the R1 and RM districts, the following regulations shall apply. A, no more than one such animal shall be kept on a parcel of land for each 1,000 square feet of lot area. B, the coops or cages housing such animals may not be located, one, in any of the required setbacks, or within 20 feet of any neighboring residential dwelling unit, within, two, within five feet of any principal structure on the lot housing the animals. Three, within five feet of any abutting residential property aligned, unless the abutting owner agrees in writing to a lesser setback. C, no roosters, geese, guinea fowl, or turkeys may be kept in any district. D, all animals shall be provided with a covered predator-proof coop or cage, or other shelter that is thoroughly ventilated, designed to be easily accessed and cleaned, and of sufficient size to permit free movement of the animals exclusive of areas used for storage of materials or vehicles. The total area of all coops or cages on a lot shall not be greater than 32 square feet for up to six animals. E, chickens and other birds shall have access to an outdoor enclosure adequately fenced or otherwise bounded to contain the birds on the property and to prevent access by dogs and other predators, and providing at least 10 square feet of area for each bird. In CBD, NMU, UMU, I-1, and LC, all regulations applicable in the R1, RM, and R1 districts shall apply, except that the number of such animals shall be limited to one animal for each 800 square feet of lot area. And then C, bees, which is very similar. I do like Commissioner Phillips' suggestion that if what we need here is a way to regulate, then a permitting process would be one possible way to go, in which codes officers would then, by definition, have access to the coops. So what we would be permitting would be the coops themselves, this would give our codes officers free access to go into people's yards and inspect, and make sure that people don't have tan hens, don't have roosters, didn't sneak in a guinea fowl, which is too bad, guinea fowls are great. So that's what I have for the moment.
Councilwoman Williamson, you have the floor.
So my question to Marcus, if this was approved and chickens were left, you know, able to be in the city, you would have to hire more codes enforcement officers because it's just like the animal control officer, you have a couple of them for the cats and dogs. So if we start allowing chickens into the city, are you going to have to hire more codes enforcement officers to, because you're going to have a lot of chickens, apparently?
I, I, I gotta be honest with you.
And the reason why I bring this up, because the budget's coming up.
No, every time, so every time, every single time, there's a new permit, it requires more of our current resources. Whether or not we can do it with our current resources, I, I have no idea how big the chicken permitting business is in the city. I, I would say it's probably likely that we can use officers we have now, the problem with that might be like union duties and contracts, so there, there could be issues that come up with. But assuming it's a lawful permit, I can't imagine there's so many chicken poos that it would require a whole nother officer, but it's possible, I don't know. To answer your question, I, I don't know.
Any other questions?
I'm going to lump in ordinance number five with what we just discussed, it's all under the same category. And the last ordinance we'll discuss is ordinance number one, amending section 2-18-27 park rules regulating hours of operations trespassing of the city of Utica code of ordinances. And this was submitted by the mayor's office, and we did discuss it slightly at the last meeting, it was supposed to be discussed at this meeting, we only have about 10 minutes to discuss it, so.
Isn't this a new version?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a new version, so this is not anything that was in, that is in committee? This is being introduced for the first time tonight, correct?
So we don't even need to discuss it now because I'm, I'm not going for it, so therefore you don't have the ordinance, so you can bring it out.
We do have 10 minutes with respect to the time and other people's questions regarding this, I feel like we should probably entertain it for about 10 minutes, if you're okay with that.
I have no problem with that, I like the way it's verbed. Our, our corporate counsel was kind enough to search other municipalities to find out what they're doing with their parks and dusted on. I believe this also gives the person the opportunity to be escorted out if there's anything that's improper going on by the police department, gives the police department the right to foresee any type of undesirable activities going on. gives the police department the right to foresee any type of undesirable activities going on in our, in our parks. And it's a tool that the police department can use in the future. So the way it's worded, I think we give it a shot and we go from there, see how it works out for our parks.
You have the floor, Judge.
I owe an explanation to our deputy chief of police here. Last time we were here, I told you about ours. Remember? You recall that? Well, after I was reviewing this and looking at other statutes and other places, I, I, hearing the comments of council, I didn't think that the idea of the council was to have like a police action regarding our parks and all that. Rather, it was to give the police department authority to act in the parks if they have reason to. Now, if they see a person walking in the Proctor Park on Culver Ave and it's at eight o'clock at night and it's dark, they're not going to go arrest that person. I don't think that's, and I don't think you want that. I don't think the council will want that. But they would probably say to the person, no, we have an ordinance about that, and it says it's not safe to be alone, ma'am or sir, maybe you... But if you have a complaint that there's a large group of people, or a group of people in the park, and they're raising some cane, or they got a fire going, and they're drinking some beer and everything else, then you have the authority to go in there and tell them to leave, watch them leave, and also tell them you can't come back. Now, as I mentioned to you earlier, I think I did, there is only one case in the miscellaneous reports of the New York State Reports of Courts written on the question of when you can take people out of public property. That decision was written by me. It became the subject of Syracuse Law School review. There are no other cases. I wrote that case because a person was arrested and after being thrown out of the Oneida County Office Building. And the issue in the case was, when can you take a public citizen out of a public building and do so with legal authority? Well, I wrote that decision, and it pretty much says what I say in here, that when you cause a disturbance in a public building or a public piece of property that causes a police reaction, that in that event, if you're told to leave and you do not leave, or you come back after being told to leave, then they may arrest you. That decision was never appealed by the, by the person who actually was fine in that particular case. That's the law as far as we know it. I know of no other public case that changes that. And when I thought about that, I said, that's what we really want here. We're not going to screw up. In other words, we don't want the public to think that there's some problem in the parks. There is none at night, as we know. The only problem we had was daytime, and that was ATVs, and we took care of that. But now, we, you know, our police department has more to do than going around and doing that sort of thing. Police officers use discretion just like judges do. Some officers stop you, and they, they may give you a ticket for a broken taillight, or they may not. They have that discretion. And the person, geez, I was bringing it in tomorrow, say, okay, bring it in tomorrow, and takes his word for it, lets him go. I mean, is the police officer doing something wrong? No. He's doing what he has a right to do. He has a right to give you a ticket, he has a right to not give you a ticket if he doesn't think he wants it. Discretion sometimes is a better part of value, and I don't want you to turn the parks... I personally didn't think you wanted to turn the parks into some sort of police action. Or the people walking around there after dark are subject to some sort of arrest, just to provoke... I, I have confidence in the Vidaque Police Department. I really do. And I was thinking of them when I was thinking of the hours, but I'm also thinking of you and them when I think the people are people, and they don't, they don't really know what goes on here. You may think they do, but they don't. People, they don't even know you have a council meeting, they don't read the paper, they don't really care. And if they've been walking in the park at night at something, nobody's going to get very excited about that. But they will get excited if there's a complaint, and then you have to give the police an authority. And the same thing with all that stuff I read that's in the zoning law that has to be addressed. And I agree with Councilwoman Friend, it's got to be addressed one way or the other. And I agree with the commissioner there, if you're going to address it, you're going to have to tell them how it's going to address it, and that takes some legal research by Ms. DeGiorgio or myself, to how we can give him authority to go in your backyard and see how many chickens you got, and how well confined your beehive is, or what the rabbits and all the other things. It's all in there, and we didn't address that yet. And I thought we'd take one little thing at a time, but Councilman Friend brought up the other thing. It's there, and you're going to have to face it, and we're going to have to look at it, and I'm going to have to, and Mr. Giorgio and I are going to have to know what your thoughts about all that are. I mean, this is not something you should just dismiss, and as you say, we don't want any police action that isn't clearly defined. And this commissioner is not going to do anything that's going to put him in jeopardy and give the city liability, too, if you go in somebody's backyard and get into a fight back there. And who told him to go in the backyard? We have cases where the police officer can't follow the guy into the garage. I know those cases. I know them all. That was a court of appeals case. So anyway, I'm just saying to you, we're in no big hurry on this. I, I know there's a conflict, but we're going to have to address the whole thing. And Ms., Councilwoman Friend brought it up, so you can't ignore it. I can't ignore it, Mr. Giorgio can. And Shay and I will keep working on this. Want to do that, Mr. Giorgio?
Yes.
And if you have a desire to, how you, eventually you vote, but at least we've got to give you something to vote on that's legal and protects the city and the people who are enforcing these things. And the park thing, I apologize to the deputy chief by talking about the hours. I must say that when I'm alone and I'm contemplating, I think of other things, and I, I think of my, me walking up there some night because I've got a personal problem, I'm going to be alone. I don't want to be looked upon as a criminal. The policeman comes and says, you know, you've got some orders. I say, all right, I'll walk on the street. What's the difference? You know what I mean? We got a lot more problems in Vidaque regarding crime than people walking in the park. But if we want to protect the police departments, they have to go in there, because a lot of things happen in, you know, 24 hours.
Thank you, Judge.
That's it. Thank you.
The last comment from Councilman Moody, and then we will adjourn the meeting.
I think that we really need to seriously consider specific hours. This is, we continue to present subjective laws that provide discretion upon the officer. When you give discretion to the officer, you also give the discretion and the ability of citizens to call the police to regulate things that they have discretion to decide. No, I do not believe police officers looking to pick on kids will go into parks looking to cause an issue. But I do believe that if we create subjectivity within these laws, it will arm some of our residents and citizens to target kids that are, that are in the parks close to dusk or dawn. Let me also say this, though, we go back to the same issue that we have said. Who is going to take out their phone and try to find the time of dusk as defined by the United States Naval Observatory Astronomical Application Department? I mean, come on. Let's be real about how this thing is going to be enforced and administered. And I don't understand why it's such an issue to put hours, which are objective, on this resolution and ordinance. And I would encourage my colleagues not to pass this. This is an issue that impacts my district, and I will be on the forefront fighting to make sure that this never happens. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Absolutely.
Is there a second? Thank you.
I just want to like all those poles. They should just go down.
All right.
It's too much. It's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Yep. Get him to come on here. We gotta go. All right, this meeting will come to order. City of Utica, Common Council. Clerk, please call the roll.
McNeil, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice Williamson, LaMedico, DeBrango, Gleamy, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Legions, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council. All right, first order of business is the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'd like to move that we waive reading the minutes, please.
All right, we have a second for multiple people. I'm gonna go with Moody, I heard him. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been posted on E code 316 and reviewed by the council, thank you. Next order of business is public hearing. We have no properties or legislation during the public hearing this evening, so the public hearing is now closed. We have no common council guests. So the next order of business is public comment period. We have one person signed up for public comment.
This is the famous Butch Waskowitz.
I believe there's one person who I think wanted to sign up but wasn't sure where the sheet is.
Yes, Butch over there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call you after, thank you. All right, Butch, please approach, thank you.
You got it, Butch.
Butch used to be here, guys, for many years, telling us about Great Canoeing.
Yes.
So please, he's a great old guy.
All right, Butch Waskowitz, haven't seen you in a while, how you doing?
Hello, I'm Butch Waskowitz, a lifelong City of Utica resident for 71 years. Members of the common council, people here in the chambers, and our TV viewers. I want to talk about a challenge from the University of Rochester, Rochester, New York, on the Genesee River. And that challenge has to do with Utica College in Utica and across Champlin Ave, St. Luke's Hospital. Everybody here has probably driven down Champlin Ave and seen where there's a sidewalk in one of those places that at best gets a C minus for safety during the day, and at night it's an F for safety. But the University of Rochester gives us a good college-to-college comparable. About 20 or 25 years ago, they ran out of space on their side of the Genesee River. They had developers who were willing to put up student housing across the river, and they did just that. But the problem was, if you were on one side of the river and you wanted to get to the other side of the river, you had to walk about a half mile, cross the bridge, come back a half mile. But of course, University of Rochester is smarter than that. They know the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. So they built a bridge across the Genesee River, and my friends in Rochester tell me they've seen bicyclists, wheelchairs, pedestrians, students, even have seen people with baby carriages with their babies using that to cross the river. And that's sort of like Champlin Ave, between St. Luke's and Utica College. It's a matter of safety that they do that. And of course, obviously, over a year ago now it's been since I made the presentation that St. Luke's should be, that tower should become Utica College dormitory in the next few years as it's vacated. Now, another comparable for that would be the Route 291 over Route 49, that's a 55 mile per hour road up there. And there never was a pedestrian bridge, you used to have to walk on a five-foot strip or wheelchair on that. But they decided to make it safer for the students who had housing on the other side of the, of that four-lane highway, and they have a pedestrian bridge which I've bicycled across, and that serves the same purpose: pedestrians, wheelchairs, and everyone else who wants to cross the bridge. Another one that we all see every day as we drive up and down the north-south arterial, another, the third comparable would be the Sunset Ave comparable, where Holy Trinity Church and the former Holy Trinity School was. It's now the Academy of Science of the Utica School District, I believe. But that's another situation, an educational situation. We made it safer for people to get from one side to the other by building a bridge, rather than have them cross like at Neuss Street or Sunset Ave, where there have been deaths of pedestrians. Because this speaks to two things. Number one, the growth of Utica College, a major academic force in this community that's here today and here tomorrow. And it speaks to safety. I've run this by a few of my friends before I come to this microphone, and everybody has said, "Sounds like a good idea, why haven't we done it already?" Second subject quickly, I've also spoken about the Veterans Hospital at the St. Elizabeth Campus. And several people who are veterans tell me that when they're looking at a new Veterans Hospital, they don't want to have the, something like the Donald Mitchell Outpatient Services 17 miles away in Rome, and the Veterans Hospital, they want it to be combined into one. And that's what the Veterans Administration will buy into. And I certainly hope that the people who are negotiating for that Veterans Hospital, and I hope everybody in this room is, that's what you're paying the big bucks for, that you'll talk with the folks in Rome and say, "You're not losing anything, you're gaining." Because in fishing terminology, the Donald Mitchell Outpatient Services clinic is like catching a 17-inch fish. The Veterans Hospital at St. East is like catching a 57-inch fish. But if you want to catch the 57-inch fish, you have to combine the 17-inch fish, the outpatient services, in with the Veterans Hospital, and properly salute your veterans, and have one-stop shopping. So I'm putting this out as a challenge to everyone, especially the elected officials, make sure these things happen. That's part of your duty and responsibility. They're staring, and they're waiting to happen, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Butch.
All right, next speaker this evening, your last name escapes me, I apologize you couldn't find the sheets there, they aren't in the front like they normally are. Natalie, thank you. If you could please approach. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name, and then you may begin.
My name is Natalie M. Williams. I bring to you all your attention a copy of the Utica Phoenix, it's just come out, November issue. I wrote the lead article, which is on the community gardens, particularly Linwood Place and J Street. What is my time? That's a question, how much time do I have to speak?
I gave Butch Waskowitz four minutes and 50 seconds, you'll receive the same, thanks.
Okay, so almost five minutes. I probably will read about the top part of this article. In short, the community gardens, which have existed in the quote-unquote "black" community for 15 years or so, have been threatened, they are endangered, they have been sold under cover of COVID-19 lockdowns, as I describe it, to a construction company, and the other lot is under control of the City of Utica. How did it happen? Oneida County apparently sold these when the courts were closed and everything else was closed. The steward of the land, which is For the Good Inc., was not informed, and now there's a construction company in the City of Utica claiming that they're going to build something on these lots, and deprive the community of what has been a greetings place, a meeting place, a place to grow food, a place to commune with their neighbors, commune with nature, and provide food for local food kitchens. Now there's gonna be a lot of finger pointing, a lot of claims that we didn't mean to do this, now that it is an issue, but clearly, I believe that it was a constructed plot. How far it goes? It has gone media, it's likely going legal. I suggest that some peaceful, reasonable negotiation occur. These lands were given to the community 15 years ago under another mayor, Mayor Raffario. They were littered lots with broken bottles, tires, mattresses, all kinds of junk, and they were cleaned up by the community and made into these remarkable, beautiful community gardens that now feed and educate and congregate people of all races and backgrounds, and are a great contribution to our city. Yet, grubby gentrification rears its ugly head once again to give us the situation that we are in. I'm not gonna point any fingers, there's gonna be legal research, there's gonna be all kinds of things coming out of this, I just give a heads-up to the people who probably should be responsible for it. I'll read a bit of the first part of the article, and you are welcome to read the rest.
Give about a minute, 50 seconds, thank you.
All right, so this is an opinion and a letter to the editor page. Community gardens, land theft under cover of COVID, land theft and corruption under cover of COVID-19 lockdowns, by Natalie M. Williams. The five main questions a reporter asks are: who, what, where, when, and why? In the case of the transfer of ownership of the community gardens, the most important one here is when? When did Oneida County sell the Linwood Place lot properties upon which the community gardens sit? And who benefits? And who loses as a consequence? The answers to those are, who benefit are, Drauzdoff and Sons Construction Company and the County of Oneida. The losers being the black, red, and brown community, For the Good Inc., and Cassandra Harris Lockwood. The answers are clear, when was in September 2020, at a time when the Oneida County offices, Utica City Hall, and courts were all closed due to COVID-19 contamination fears. As these maneuvers were made behind the back of the community in an obvious grab for the real estate these gardens occupy, Cassandra Harris Lockwood and the Board of Directors of FTG were given no notice for them to take action to secure and protect these lands. The Urban Renewal Agency meeting recently held in October 2021 makes it clear that the City of Utica intends to hold on to the J Street Garden property, which insists of three contiguous lots in the event of a housing developer's possible interest in the lots.
10 seconds, Natalie, thank you.
All right, so the City of Utica, you have been notified that you could be the good guys in this, or you could be painted as what I believe you truly are, the bad guys. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
I state this so that everybody, and that the record is clear.
Thank you.
On what we believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that closes public comment period this evening. We have no communications from the mayor. Let's see, no cash reports? No cash reports this evening? Reports from the city officers, corporation counsel?
Nothing to report.
All right, deputy chief Noonan?
Nothing to report.
Chief Ingersoll?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner?
I'm good.
You're good? All right, and then is anyone else here? No, all right. Just looking around. All right. We don't have any other communications. So petitions for monstresses and appeals, First District, Councilmember Majority Leader Maria McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Second District, Councilman Burmaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish everybody a nice and safe Thanksgiving, you know, family time, you know, keep an eye out for your family, make sure everybody's emotions were in check, and be safe and enjoy. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two pieces of legislation tonight. The first is ordinance number four, and I'm just gonna read this really quickly, just as a, for those people who weren't here for the pre-meeting. This is simply to rescind some old legislation on the books that stands in direct contrast to some new legislation on the books, so I'm just looking to clean up the city code so that people aren't confused by it, et cetera. So rescinding Chapter 2-5, Article 3, Fowl, whereas Chapter 2-5, Article 3 of the City of Utica Code of Ordinances prohibits any person from having, keeping, or offering to sell any fowl within the City of Utica, and whereas a new zoning ordinance establishing zoning regulations for the City of Utica was adopted by the City of Utica Common Council on February 3, 2021, and whereas Article 1, Section 2-29-7 of the aforementioned zoning ordinance defines agriculture urban as the production, keeping, or maintenance of plants and animals in urban or developed areas with animal production, keeping or maintenance limited to chickens, rabbits, and bees, and whereas the regulation of agriculture urban are set forth in Article 11 of the zoning ordinance, and whereas Chapter 2-5, Article 3 of the City Code, City of Utica Code of Ordinances contradicts the regulations as set forth in Article 11 of the zoning ordinance adopted by the Common Council on February 3, 2021. Now therefore be it ordained that the City of Utica Common Council does hereby rescind and remove Chapter 2-5, Article 3, Fowl from the City of Utica Code of Ordinances, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Moody. If there's no debate on the floor, please cast your votes.
Six nays defeated.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven nays. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, what's going on? Councilman DeBrango, how did you vote? The lights are bad over here.
It's nice, it's up on the porch behind you.
Oh, sweet, all right, thank you. Yeah, that's, yeah. Because we gotta get a light bulb. Anything else this evening?
I do. Ordinance number five, this is gonna sound very familiar, rescind Chapter 2-5, Article 4, Bees, whereas Chapter 2-5, Article 4 of the City of Utica Code of Ordinances prohibits beekeeping in the City of Utica, and whereas a new zoning ordinance establishing zoning regulations for the City of Utica was adopted by the City of Utica Common Council on February 3, 2021, and whereas Article 1, Section 2-29-7 of the aforementioned zoning ordinance defines agriculture urban as the quote "production, keeping, or maintenance of plants and animals in urban or developed areas with animal production, keeping or maintenance limited to chickens, rabbits, and bees, and whereas the regulations of agriculture urban are set forth in Article 11 of the zoning ordinance, and whereas Chapter 2-5, Article 4 of the City of Utica Code of Ordinances contradicts the regulations as set forth in Article 11 of the zoning ordinance adopted by the Common Council on February 3, 2021. Now therefore be it ordained that the City of Utica Common Council does hereby rescind and remove Chapter 2-5, Article 4, Bees from the City of Utica Code of Ordinances, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption."
We have a second from Moody, your votes.
Six nays defeated.
Seven.
Seven.
Anything else this evening?
That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Fourth District, President Protemp, Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if you'll be so kind, I need a Thursday rule waiver for legislation, ordinance number one and ordinance number two.
Is there a second? We have a second from DeBrango. Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? We have one nay. We have one nay. It's waived regardless, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. My next order is to request my colleagues to refer to committee legislation number one, amending Section 2-1827 Parks Rules regulating hours and operation trespassing in Utica Code of Ordinances. Request to refer to committee.
Second.
Second from Williamson, any opposed? Uh, one opposed, thank you. Specific committee or just committee as a whole?
Committee as a whole is fine.
Point of inquiry.
Yes.
If we are opposed to putting it in committee, it means that we are opposed to even considering the legislation, correct?
Say again?
If we are opposed to putting it in committee, it means that we are opposed to considering the legislation, right?
On, you wish to not vote on it this evening, so the, he moved the legislation and then made a preceding motion to place in committee rather than getting a second and bringing it to a vote. So he just introduced and placed it in committee basically by that vote.
I get that.
Don't, don't, you want to put a time in there? If it's in committee, then we talk, that's probably, okay.
All right.
We good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number two, also to refer to committee. As a result of our discussion with our corporate counsel, I'd like to refer the legislation amending our zoning law into committee, sir.
Is there a second to that move and commit? Okay, Williamson's the second on that one. Any opposed to placing that one in committee? Just the one? All right, thank you very much, it is still in committee. Anything else this evening?
No, Mr. President, thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilperson Moody.
Thank you, Mr. President, I will also like to speak to the situation with the community gardens. I think that community gardens are an asset to our city, and I think For the Good has been a great steward of most of those lands, all of those lands there for which they have had those community gardens. I do agree with them that it is a tragedy that the county, Oneida County, not the city, sold
Exactly.
Linwood without notification of them, and in those moments, it is disheartening that as a city council person, I am limited with regard to what I can do of county business as it was a county matter. I will also like to address this and make it, make sure that it is clear, the City of Utica has not sold those community gardens over there, I believe on, Linwood is one, the other one J is.
J, correct.
Has not sold those and has intentionally, I want to make this clear, has intentionally not sold those gardens so that For the Good can make an offer to the city and be considered for that. So we, I know I'm committed to making sure that those community gardens exist and are vibrant, I know members of the city are committed to doing that as well. Unfortunately, some things have to follow a process, that is one of them, but I know for as far as we can get a resolution with that agency, I'm certainly not speaking on behalf of the administration, but I do know the intention of the city maintaining that property, not selling it, so that way it can maintain a community garden with For the Good. With that, Mr. President, I have nothing else.
Thank you very much. Sixth District, Councilperson Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Council-at-large, Minority Leader Mark Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing to pass.
Thank you. Council-at-large, Jack Lametico, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilman DeBrango?
There's no more legislation, but I just want to, I have a grandson, he turned one years old today, so I'm very proud of that. Name is Rocco Vincent DeBrango, so, anybody listening out there, that's my grandson, don't mess with him. And I just, I just, I just celebrated my birthday on Monday, so it was, I wanted them to be born on the same day, but it didn't happen, but I just want to shout out to my son and my daughter-in-law, they produced two beautiful grandchildren, and I'm very proud of that, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, just one thing really quick, this is for next year, the new council that's forming, it's just an organizational announcement, Second Class Cities Law, just I want to make sure everyone marks this in their calendars. January 3rd, we will have to have an organizational meeting, that's in accordance with Second Class Cities Law, which reads, "It must happen the second day in January unless the second day is a Sunday." And January 2nd is a Sunday next year, so everyone get that in their calendars, we don't have to set a time, but January 3rd, it's gotta go down. So with that, does anyone have a motion?
Motion.
All right, all right, everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.